I'm making motion to open our Select Board of Health meeting on October 1st, 2020, at 5:00 PM, online, on a Zoom meeting, and also on the plane, at the main meeting room, the municipal offices in Deerfield, at 8 Conway Street, South Deerfield.
I'll second that. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Can I open the Planning Board meeting now?
Sure, please. Thank you, John.
This is John Wade, Chair of the Planning Board. I'd like to open the meeting on October, October 1st, 5:00 PM. Planning Board of the Town of Deerfield, online, under all the direction from the Governor. And if we can just do a roll call. Planning Board members, Annalee, are you present?
Present.
Denise?
Present.
Paul?
Present.
Rachel? And Mary? John Wade's here, so we've got four, so we can, we can open the meeting.
Great. You're welcome.
Great.
I can't thank you enough for quick, you know, coming around and getting to meet with us. We've been scrambling to try and get all this together between Town Council and all. And I really appreciate you, you're the Planning Board, working with the Select Board to try and move this process forward, if we could get it, you know, completed. So, so we've been working on stuff, and I know that Lisa updated the final kind of text for what we had so far, and the text been sent out today, and I'm not sure if anyone had a chance to read it, because, you know, it was just a few short hours ago. But I thought we could go over that today. And then I also wanted to kind of go over maps, and then kind of pick up where we left off, and have Chris Curtis weigh in on where, where we were, kind of where we are now, and see if anyone has any changes or questions, or things we should still be working on, or if there's any disagreements between us, and just to try and hash that, hash that stuff out. Not, let's see, does any, I mean, I don't want to speak unless someone else wants to go, I mean, whatever, I don't want, I don't want to just take over the meeting, but if anyone else wants to start.
No, I think if you can go ahead, and Chris had written an email with a couple of questions, so, you know.
That's great. Okay, so, so really, the test we can go through in a minute, and really, I thought the maps have been a little bit challenging for me to try and get, to get straight, so I could kind of show everybody what we're doing. I think not much has changed, other than adding the central. So, one of the main changes that the Select Board had talked about with Town Council was two, was to really have three marijuana overlay districts to kind of simplify it. And so, we would do, we would do one, MO1, which would be retail only, and that would be kind of such as like downtown, and the spots in red that we had already discussed. And we could still discuss any of that. MO2 would kind of allow everything other than social consumption. So, the, you know, the, a retail area, a cultivation, manufacturing, kind of everything in an MO2 district. And then, still no, no consumption, social consumption anywhere in the town. MO3, we, I kind of recommended this, because we would just do, it would be in districts that we would only allow manufacturing, cultivation only. No retail stores, obviously, no consumption, but it was in areas that we were not going to have a retail store located. So, we thought we would try for, for three districts, just to make that easier. I'm going to go to the larger board, and split through a couple of shared screens, and I'd try to check those out a little bit, and just take part of discussion. I'll be right back. I'm trying to talk loud, because I know further out. This is, this map here that I have up right now, was the original, kind of, our draft map that I think we're working on.
It's bad.
Second. So, this was our, you know, our original map that we had, we had had, was the draft map for the, on the Planning Board discussions. So, it had, you know, down at the bottom, it had the industrial park, which is the MO2, and then it had the smaller sections that already, already was in MO2 kind of area. And then this is the newer, the bigger purple one here, was what we were going to add. And then the rest were going to be retail only, no cultivation, no manufacturing. And then we had, at the top, we had this section up here, which was, was an MO2 section. But, so I'll list to MO1 and MO2. So, I printed off from, from the Town Districts map, to try and just kind of clarify that a little bit. So, down at the bottom is the industrial park. Anything in red here, outlined, would be in MO2. So, that would be cultivation, manufacturing, and retail, would be allowed in this area here. And, and this area down here, which is currently already our only district. And then, we have this area up here, the new district, which would be the MO2, which, you know, retail, cultivation, and manufacturing would be allowed. And then anything in, in this pink area here, is that, is just that retail only. That was the section. None of that's changed. This one's down here, and a little sliver over here, both of which is developed already. And then the outline of the town district. So, these are the current overlay districts, for, I think it's C1 and C2, the commercial district. So, those would only be retail. Anything in pink would be retail only. Anything here would be MO, anything in red would be the MO2, which would be retail, cultivation, and manufacturing. And then, and then, let me see. So, then we had MO3 districts. So, MO3 was, we were really thinking that retail would be an opportunity up here, kind of outside of town, the park had kind of had a, you know, a fleet on us there, as much as they are in a residential business district. We just felt like retail would not be, you know, it's not really thriving economic development, you know, to put it on the edge of town. So, we were just thinking we probably would just have manufacturing, cultivation in this area only. And that would be, that was kind of what we had out as an MO2. And then, the other central, this would be a new district, which would be in manufacturing, cultivation only, which would be in this central area here. And I'm happy to adjust that anyway. I was trying to find a simplistic way to kind of leave some area in the middle that we, you know, we already have a place there now. And if anybody wants to adjust that at all, happy to do that. I don't, I don't really have much say over exactly where these lines go, but I feel like we should have just not retail, nothing other than manufacturing, cultivation in, in, in that area. So, that's really the map that I have right now. This was our original. Nothing has really changed, other than making an MO3, and getting rid of anything else in the RA district, no other manufacturing, no other marijuana in any area. Another MO3, which is the upper corner, upper quadrant of the, of the town. And then just kind of solidifying these areas here, which we had talked about last meeting, adjust retail, and then, and then kind of everything in those MO2s. So, that's, that was kind of the map. If anyone has any questions on those, or wants to adjust them, or whatever, happy to do that.
So, the only place, this is Annalee, the only place for cultivation is in MO2, and then?
MO2 and MO3.
Ah, so MO3 is manufacturing and cultivation, no retail.
That's correct, but no retail.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Trevor, this is, this is Denise. Just to put it into context, first of all, it's sort of hard to see, I'm squinting. But, can you, can you tell me, in the retail space, because I can't really see, what, what's there now?
So, what do we have available right now for retail?
Well, no, what, what area, you're saying the retail area, I can't tell from this map where it is in town.
I know, it's very small. So, let me, let me help a little bit. Can you see my pointer at all, my hand?
Yep. Can you zoom in, Trevor, by going to the top plus sign?
Yes, yes, I can.
I guess what I'm asking is, what other businesses are in close proximity to where the proposed retail? Because I can't figure out where it is.
Yeah, so retail right now, if I scroll down, in this bottom section right here, is the Deerfield Plastics area, the old Deerfield Plastics, in that bottom corner.
Yep.
And so, across the street is Yankee Candle, and Motocic, all of that kind of area down here, then you break in the Wateley and the Shimmelup Shops and all. So, that's right now is our current retail marijuana overlay district, this little square here. This is downtown, the common right, right here where my pointer is. So, that, that's the area to discuss, although we want to allow, you know, retail downtown and not, you know, that was brought up before, we can talk about that tonight. And then across the street, there's a little bit near Conway Road, and this little section here, there's a couple fields and a house, but that's pretty much it. And then, you know, you go up here, you've got the, the fire stations across the way, you've got Yankee Beach in here, Yankee Candle's in here, the, the test hospital's here, and then you get up, you get up over here, this is the old drive-in. So, this is kind of that area in, in here, where we've got Yankee Beach, and these really are industrial kind of areas up here. So, that was kind of suggested, that that would be kind of everything. And then, and then up here further on 5 and 10, which would be, you know, from kind of the discussed, the general north on 5 and 10, which is really our commercial district right now, where the, you know, the storage facility is, some of our businesses, Greg Dalla Lobbie, that kind of sits up to this end of town. So, we were thinking retail only here, no manufacturing here, no cultivation. So, that was that, and then, and then down on the bottom here, this is the industrial park right now, and that was already in our, kind of, that's our current retail, cultivation, manufacturing was allowed in this area. This is pretty much, we don't really see that, but maybe in the future, one of the businesses turns over, somebody makes an offer, you know, who knows? But that would be available here. So, that's, that's really kind of where we're at. Is there anything else on the map?
No, thanks for that clarification. I just couldn't figure out what, the northern part, what was there now. But thanks.
That's correct. If I go to the central district, you know, I was trying to just kind of get a section in here, it was, you know, allowable. But, but again, if anyone has any suggestions to adjust any of this, happy to take that into account, you know. And then the northern, the northern section was central, this was our northern section, which would just be cultivation, this is up at the other end of town, where the train station is, and the quarry, and that kind of thing, or industrial.
Trevor, while you, this is Chris Curtis. While you had that other image on the screen, I think that's the most important thing to consider, which was that the addition to the MO3 in the central district. My, my question is, all of the other overlay districts, the boundaries were, were based on existing zoning districts, and that, that one, yeah, that, that is not based on existing zoning districts. And my question is, how are those, how are those boundaries drawn, and how can we justify those?
So, those are, those are based on just property line, it was based on parcel only, and we already kind of allow it in our area currently. And so, I was just trying to take a section around that area, and not allow it kind of everywhere in town. Talking with council, she said, just kind of step out where you think is appropriate, you know, where we have it right now. And again, if you feel like we should adjust that any further, I felt like, you know, we have that now, we have, you know, the digestors there, we have a plan already, you know, it's, you know, it's just, it's where, you know, I, I couldn't think of anywhere else in town that we would want to put it, other than, you know, again, at the other end of town. But if you want to adjust that anywhere, I'm fine with that. I, you know, I don't really, if you want to narrow that, narrow that in some, that's fine too. I don't have any particular.
It's, Chris, it's arbitrary, it's arbitrary in the sense that we didn't want to look like spot zoning, but we want to encompass the existing marijuana facility already there.
And we already have, you know, some other, you know, the digestors are there. So, again, we did bring that in a bit, but a lot of this is, is on that digester property, is a big parcel here. And then this other parcel, which I think a lot of it's got grouped together, I think these lines are a little old, because I think they did consolidate quite a bit of that lot.
So, is that just one property owner that we're talking about?
Uh, no, there are a couple others here. This was some farmland, I think there's fields along here, this is some farmland here, I know this is farm here, this is all farmland. So, we were thinking, you know, people wanted to grow in this area, that was already in this section where we allowed it, so. But again, if, if we should pull some of this off of 5 and 10, or, I think some of this is the back side, and then this bit of 5 and 10 right here. I wasn't sure, you know, like some of these, I didn't know how detailed we wanted to get into grouping some of these parcels out, or if we would just do that like, like, right when the viewer's got a permit, you know, obviously, you need so many square footages when you do a plant like this, so.
Some of those parcels are also protected. Some of those parcels are also protected. Yeah.
Right.
I'm not sure which ones are, but there is a conservation restriction APR on several of those parcels, so.
And then, you know, a lot of them are just small enough that they're not going to allow it anyway, so you still have the space to do it. So, if we want to carve that up even more, that's fine. But, you know, you can have an overlay district, you just don't have to allow it over there. You don't have to have, they have to have a community consent agreement, and, and, you know, a clear review.
I think the parcel is that, two parcel is where the marijuana is now. One, it's two, it comes off Child's Cross Road, right, Trevor? I mean, I, I'm not sure which one it is.
15 is the first facility, I think 19, this large one here, is, is where the digestors are.
Yeah. Yeah, but see that number two? I think that number two is, is, is the current one, two and one.
Yeah, two and one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I already intended. Hard to see, you know, it's 12 over, maybe, maybe the boundary is, is the roof. And that was the other question I had for Town Council last night, was, you know, do we want to just run that boundary along the roof line? And they were like, you know, they said, no, it should be whole parcels. So, so that's what I, you know, that's kind of what we checked that, but if, sorry, if, if anybody, if they were thinking it should be boundary versus, you know, the roof line, is that easier, or more?
No, there's always, there's always fights when you have divide parcels. We're much better off doing it by parcels.
Anybody else have a way, I mean, what, anybody have a thought on how to break that up, Chris, please?
Well, this is John, and I just want to, again, highlight from what we heard at our, our public hearings, was that, you know, I think people wanted to get it out of RA, residential agriculture, because it's not, they didn't consider it agriculture really now. So, you know, and, and because we have the one there, I, you know, I, we have to continue to deal with that, so that's one thing, but not to make it, you know, to try to keep it as minimal as possible, I think.
That's fine. Do you, you want to minimize that a little further, then?
Well, that gets back to what Carolyn sort of mentioned, is about spot zoning, that's, I know, we want to avoid that, so how do you, it's, we're a little bit of a, a bind.
That we wouldn't be interested in really providing any others in that area, in what we, you know, in what has really mattered to the town.
I'm going to answer your question, just say, please remember to say your name for minutes' purpose. Thank you.
Oh, well, this is Carolyn. I think if you did an analysis of the area, there is, is Baraway Farm, or Bars Farm, no, Baraway Farm.
Yeah.
And, and this, and it ends that Bar, Bar, Bars Farm, and it goes up to Child's Cross Road. And there's houses there, and there's conservation restricted land. So, even though it looks like a fairly big district, I think there really isn't much you can do with it, John, and it would not, it would pass the sniff tip test for spot zoning, without actually doing all that much.
So, I guess I wanted to ask one quick question. If, if in fact, we just wanted to sort of let the current cultivator out on Mill Village Road do manufacturing, is there another, I don't know if it's a bylaw or another way to do it, and just say that, like, they're grandfathered in or something, give them the right to do it, if we want, you know, give them the right to apply for it, but then, kind of just not try to do this. I feel like we're tiptoeing around this thing. If that's what, all we're really trying to do, is give them the right to cultivate, then maybe we just do that, instead of trying to make this funny district around them.
That, I mean, that is a possibility. I think that's what we thought at first. I'm certainly open to that. We were thinking any current, you know, cultivator would have, have that opportunity to also manufacture. I was just, a little bit of my concern was that we were, we were going to take away a huge section of area of the town that we wouldn't allow. You know, we, we are giving up a large section of, you know, pretty much the whole town is the RA district, so, I mean, obviously, not, not everything. But, so we were thinking, should we leave some, some spot to allow it? But, but, you know, I agree, John, that's, that's definitely another way to go, and I'm, I'm certainly open to that. I don't.
Someone needs to mute.
Sorry, I just switched from my phone to the, to the audio.
No problem, no problem. Thank you, John.
So.
No, I made a good point.
This is Chris Curtis. I, I think John's idea makes a lot of sense as well. And I thought, actually, that Town Council was going to try to write a section to the bylaw that would allow pre-existing uses to have the capability to do manufacturing. I'm not sure if that got communicated to her, but that would be, in my opinion, a better route than, than having a really large MO3 district that might potentially have impact on a lot of residential areas.
I'm certainly okay with that. We just needed to take care of this, our pre-existing manufact, you know, cultivator.
So, we could reach out to Lisa and see if there is, you know, a way to write that into the bylaw that, that would allow that. I, I know that was, that was a piece of language we saw earlier, and, and that's, I mean, that's, that's fine with me. I really, I mean, I think if we have the northern MO3 district that would allow cultivation and manufacturing, there is a fairly good chunk of land up there, there is space to allow, allow cultivation and manufacturing up in that end. I know a lot of it's quarry and the train yard, but there is other parcels up in that end that could support that. And then also, we have the new M2 district that would allow, you know, some spots closer to town, that would allow kind of all, all three options. So, I could have AP touch base, you know, tomorrow, I mean, if, if, if the Planning Board seems to be okay with that, obviously, we'd bring that to a hearing. I mean, we could kind of weigh in and see what you guys think, if that's a better route to go.
So, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, and I'd like to hear from the other Planning Board members, because that's not, you know, two years ago, we were against manufacturing in the RA district. I, I think we're, I think we were against that, we didn't zone it.
Right.
You know, things have changed, I'm, I'm not saying we are for it now, I'm just saying that I, what I don't like is the bigger area, and doing this kind of gymnastics with the maps. I don't like that. So, I don't know, Paul was part of that discussion over the past two years, I don't know if he remembers anything, or.
All right, you can't move. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yeah, I haven't, I can't even see this ca, this one calendar, the one map here that says MO3 on it, and that's it, just a small area.
Oh. Yeah, I mean, it is a, I mean, it looks large, because I've got it swelled up, but it's.
Okay, all right.
If we go back to the main map, it is, you know, it's really kind of this area in orange.
Oh, C2. Oh, down here.
Yeah, there's, there's C2, and then there's this outlined area right here.
Okay.
But if that's, that's too large, you know, we could, we could slim that bit, or if, or if the board feels, you know, I think John was kind of saying, what was your feeling, Paul, on, on, you know, over the last couple of years, what have your thoughts changed on manufacturing? I mean, I think now that we know more what it is, and that's, that's all.
Yep.
So, Trevor?
Yes?
What am I asking Lisa about pre-existing manufacturing? Because is it manufacturing not allowed in that district anyway?
It's not right now.
It wasn't, yeah, it wasn't allowed in the RA district, but could, could we write the bylaw so that we could allow manufacturing in a co-existing cultivation facility? So, any current?
In a co-existing, okay. It's, it's, it would be grandfathering in what, the one, the one cultivation operation that we have in the town.
Since, since we're removing, you know, any of that opportunity from the rest of the RA district.
And, and I would add, because I think it's justification is important, is, you know, three years ago, we didn't know a lot about this whole marijuana industry, and now we know more, and it, from what we understand, cultivation by itself is a difficult proposition, and so for a business to be viable, cultivation and product manufacturing going together is a more viable business. The other one that we proved, the one down on Greenfield Road, across from Yankee Candle, that does have the combination already. So, kind of where, we're almost being consistent by allowing cultivation and product manufacturing together. Retail, I think, is a whole other thing, so we're not going to put all three together.
Exactly.
So, that, that's kind of my, I guess, to some extent justification of saying to, to make this exception.
That makes sense.
So, is that going to be spot zoning, is the next question?
Well, it, it sort of is, that's why we need to have a, I think, a real good justification for it.
I, I think because we're grandfathering it, it's grandfathered, so I think it's, it isn't really spot zoning.
But it's not grandfathered, is my understanding. It doesn't exist, correct, John?
The cultivation, the cultivation.
Right, but manufacturing doesn't exist in the RA, right, John?
Right.
Right.
Correct.
You can't grandfather something that doesn't exist, right?
But we're grandfathering the only cultivation in all, what, by removing everything from the RA district, we are grandfathering the only cultivation operation, and giving them the opportunity to manufacture, by just saying that we're adding manufacturing to that operation.
Exactly. It seems like the grandfathering goes to the overlay district, not to the RA, you know, overall RA district.
Right.
Right, because we're removing, we're removing everything from the RA district, except that MO3, or MO2 up in the corner. Everything else is taken off the map.
I think that the language that I would suggest Lisa consider might say something like, where there is a pre-existing, non-conforming, approved cultivation operation, that operation may be expanded to include a that operation may be expanded to include a co-located manufacturing facility with approval of a special permit from the planning board.
Well said.
Well said.
It was lovely, Chris, except I don't type that fast.
Perfect, perfect speech, perfect speech.
We have it on record.
So this is Denise. So I have a question. I mean, I tend to agree with the grandfathering and however, however that can be done. So in, with other operations, other cultivation, are we saying that they can do co-manufacturing or not?
Only in the, yes, only in, only in the MO3 district and the MO2 district, not the MO1
because that would be just retail.
Okay, got it. Yeah, I, I agree with that. I mean, you know, I don't know what kind of square footage. I mean, what do you need for, for manufacturing, what size facility?
Great question. So when I spoke with, with a, with a manufacturer, they had said specifically at this plant, they would not be increasing the footprint at all. It just kind of, it infills some of the footprint that they have already. So it's not like building another building. They're, they're kind of just using the square footage they have right now in the current building and just kind of taking away some of the, some of the floor plan and it'll be more of a hard structure, you know, more of the metal walls instead of, instead of like greenhouse kind of material.
Right, it's, there will be some distilling, you know, like for oil, like when you distill lavender oil from lavender.
Yeah, right.
There'll be some of that equipment, but mostly it's chopping up, you know, it's, you're harvesting the material from the greenhouse and then you're chopping it up and packaging. It's not manufacturing like you would think of like a commercial manufacturing plant, like, you know, the plastics company or something. But they are processing the marijuana like you would process vegetables or lavender or whatever.
Right, okay, okay. This is Denise again. Isn't there, I mean, there's a current operation up in Bernadette that is doing that already.
Yeah.
Is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, it's inside the same, it's inside the same building.
Okay.
I think generally they want it inside the same building because then there's less security issues. And again, this is something, you know, we were trying to be ahead of the game, but, you know, transporting it to another location is a security issue. And also it's product, you've got to protect the product from, you know, just environmental stuff as well. So processing it on-site where you grow it is economically the only way you can really do it effectively.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
So do you want to go through the text at all of the, Chris may have had some questions on that too and we went through it last night at our select board meeting.
This is Annalise. Before we do that, can we discuss one more thing on the map?
Of course.
I think Trevor, you had a different map that wasn't in color. It was black and white and kind of a new retail area.
Let me pull that up. So...
Is that the EP direct, one, that's the fixed set thing right up behind my house?
So is this the map you were talking about, Haley?
Yes, yes. And I have a question and, well, it sounds like Paul has a question and I also have a question in regards to that map. Paul?
Well, the, the black, the dark section down behind my house, that's an EP and then...
Yeah, that's our expedited permitting.
EPD, EPD permitting. Are you talking about the side that's going up 5 and 10? And there's, there's one piece at the top here and then two down here, down at the bottom.
So, so this right here, are you talking this? So the expedited permitting area, the old paper factory is not part of any of the retail or re-fathing or cultivation or anything. That's not allowed in that section. The only part that is allowed for re-fathing, retail and cultivation is 61, 65, 69, these areas here and the industrial plant down here. And that's the new area for kind of everything is this red one up here.
Okay.
So retail only is what you see in this gray area outlining pink. Possibly the town, if you want to do the center of town. I'm still open on that, just seeing what your thoughts are on that. And then this northern section, the gray.
That northern section is the question I have. And in particular, is, is, it's hard to note, but 5 and 10 is to the right of 91 there, right? Is that correct? So there's just...
This is 5 and 10 here.
It's a whole strip north-south.
That's 5 and 10, okay. So this is probably as much a general question and I apologize for...
Yeah, yeah.
...education on this, is, you know, we've talked about trying not to have 5 and 10 corridor become a Hadley Route 9. And I don't know how, you know, how we can reconcile a pro-business approach with then, you know, more, I don't know, more opportunities and for the retail along there. Does that have to do with the size of the lots? Or if you could sort of just help me with, with understanding potentially, I guess, what's allowed there now and, and how we are reconciling that with sort of trying to keep 5 and 10 be more farmish agriculturally looking rather than one business after another.
I don't know if anyone else wants to take that, but I mean, I feel like if we're going to have business in town, that's kind of the spot that it should go. It's the highest traffic. It's where you're going to get your economic development. It's already commercially zoned. But local, do you have local businesses? Yeah, I think, I still have my head, but I don't really know.
In that northern area, Annalise, again, this is, that's part of the, sort of the, that village area. I forget what it's called.
Is that, is that the way they used to have stances and stuff there for, across from where they have a place where their storing unit stuff? It was up next to the, the cars, the car and the, and the, which has moved now, I guess.
Volvo place.
Yeah, that's right. That's all either side of the road. This is hillside right here at the top. So it's everything kind of from the butterfly museum down to kind of the old drive-in.
Yep.
So I guess, Annalise, again, in general, how are we, I mean, is that idea of trying to protect 5 and 10 just an idea and we don't have any real ways of actualizing that or is, or...
So, Annalise, I think, and I, maybe I missed something here, but some of that's zone commercial already and, you know, there is commercial up there. As you get further up though, then it becomes non-commercial again. It's RA. So we, we do want to, you know, where there are businesses and buildings, we want that to stay and we want to, if someone moves out, someone should be able to move in. So I just want to make sure and Chris kind of referred to this earlier. We should stick with what is already commercial, stick with the zones that we have.
I see. So where that bluish area is now is already zoned commercial.
We have to double check. Chris, you, you have your other map out to verify that?
Yeah, yes, we followed the exact boundaries of the existing commercial district.
Okay.
Okay, alright, that helps me. Thank you.
I do have a question about the Deerfield Railroad Yard. I just zoomed in on what you've got up there. And that's a little too big. That's in my backyard, as a matter of fact. And that, that, some of that is still RA. So, and then over on River Road, you've got a bunch of, you've got a bunch of houses. So we should stick to the industrial zone area.
That was something that was done already, right? That was on the, that was on this map here.
Yeah, but I don't think, I think you didn't follow it perfectly.
Well, I...
We should double check that.
The intention, John, I think the intention is just to go over the same district that is already zoned there. So if Trevor, Trevor, on your map, can you, can you verify what was C2 already up there?
Yeah, I tried to just follow that C2. I mean, I made a good, I added a little section here when I did it, but I was just doing whatever was, whatever was already C2. But if C2 is supposed to be that big, I, you know, this was a draft map too, so I'm not sure if that's, if that's right. That was what we got from Furco.
Yeah, so...
My, John, I, I don't know how correct or incorrect it is, but the intention was to have the C2 be the MO3 district, the same, same boundaries.
Alright, so let's do that. And if we have to go fix the C2, then maybe that's, that's, maybe that's what we need to do.
And that's fine. Yeah, if we need to adjust that, that's fine.
Yeah, no, we were not drawing, we were not drawing new MO3 up there. It was using the same existing zoned area.
We, we should and this will definitely, as we, as we know, our River Road folks pay attention to public hearings and we'll get some reaction from them. So we should be prepared for that and if we need to make some changes, we can do that.
Well, I, in my mind, if you have a marijuana cultivation and manufacturing up there, it's, you know, has less impact than, you know, other industrial uses.
Potentially, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, if the available space outside of the rail yard and the quarry is used up for manufacturing of, you know, growing and manufacturing marijuana, that's better than, you know, some of the other choices that we've had in the past.
But, and I agree with you on a lot of the property up there, but right by the residences and stuff, there should be setbacks and so just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
You know, I think this was a draft map that came out of a discussion, so we should look at our original and, yeah, if you need to adjust that C2, that's fine.
Alright.
I was just trying to see what was already there, but...
Yeah, no, I see that. Alright, and all of these, well, we'll get to the wording now, but I think all of this is still under special permit, right?
Of course, yep.
Alright, any other questions, planning board members on the maps or should we go to the...
I have one last question. At our last meeting, we talked about whether we wanted to include the...
It's shocking.
I'm sorry, yeah, Chris Curtis. We, we questioned whether we wanted to include the town center in the, as a retail location or not. And did that question get resolved or discussed at the select board meeting?
Oh, well, we, we felt if there was one, if someone wanted to retail downtown, we would definitely want to be looking at it very carefully. But we didn't want to rule it out. And that was why that separate district, no cultivation, no manufacturing, only retail. And it needed to be, we needed to look at it very carefully.
So that...
I mean, I wasn't against it, but I wasn't like, you know, 100%, like this is what we need.
This, this is Denise. I have a question. I know that at our last planning board meeting, it was either, I forget which meeting, but they're talking about the, the facility in Northampton and how it was put on the outskirts of town. So I sort of had a question about, has anyone done any survey? You know, people who are going in and buying product, are they just going there? Are they going to Northampton downtown? What else are they doing? Or are they just going there because it's right off the highway, getting back on and going? So is it, is it more detrimental to the town or is it sort of, you know, I mean, does it make a difference?
I can only tell you that when I, I have Department of Public Health meetings down there and Homeland Security meetings down there right next to it. And a couple of times a month before the, you know, we had COVID outbreak. And the people were coming, I mean, it was just a traffic nightmare and people were coming off the highway and getting back on the highway. They were not going into the town of Northampton. And that was why we were thinking of potential have, I mean, again, you're having it more widespread. At that time, putting it on the outskirts with so much traffic, it was probably okay because there were single, you know, people were single-mindedly going to buy marijuana. They weren't going to go to the other stores and stuff. But by the time you get a build-out of this marijuana as the years go on, somebody might want a retail downtown and it would be a draw. We wouldn't necessarily get the overwhelming traffic because there are other locations now open, but you would have a draw downtown. And that was the only reason I was supporting something like this downtown is because maybe somebody's picking up medicinal marijuana and then going out to lunch or something. It wasn't, you know, more like whatever, less, less desirable use maybe like it was in Northampton because they were one of the first ones, you know, open out here. So I, I don't know. I mean, I'm, I'm sort of on the fence, but I don't think it's negative as long as we would look at it very carefully.
Yeah, Denise, again, I mean, that's what we talked about and I talked about, you know, having a visioning for the town and, you know, what are we really looking for in the town? You know, we talked about doing that and, you know, having, you know, focus groups of kids of, of, you know, young adults and then of senior citizens, what does everyone want? And, you know, I mean, people keep saying, well, there's not much in South Deerfield or, you know, what are we going to do with South Deerfield? And, you know, so I think it's good not to, I think it's good to leave it open that we could potentially have some retail there.
So I'm sorry, this is Annalise. Is, is there MO1 retail only now, the way this map is drawn? It's a little hard for me to see, in, in the center of town?
No, it's not allowed in the center of town right now. And this would be new, this is part of the new zoning, is that you would have the ability if someone wanted it downtown.
So this, does this map show then what MO1 would be?
Yeah, that pinky area.
Okay. Well, if we're still, excuse me, but if, if we're still undecided about that, is there another way of approaching it, just as John had suggested, another way of approaching our other issue? I don't know, I mean...
Well, I also think, don't forget, we're preparing for a public hearing is all we're doing. We're trying to come up with the best we can and then we bring it to the public. And I know there's going to be some input from, this is John Wade. And, and I know there'll be some input from the public about if we zone downtown for retail. But I think it's worth, it might be worth having the conversation.
Annalise, so it might be worth having the conversation if we're still ambivalent about it and it's just really a way of gathering information?
Yeah, I mean, that's what we do at public hearings is get information from the public. You know, there's only seven of us. We don't, we can't make the decision for everybody, so we want their input. You know, we try to do the best we can, but then we want their input.
This is Carolyn. If, if we have a public hearing and, and people are, really don't want it, then we just pull the whole thing because like I said, no one is really, it's just sort of like a future, if someone wanted it in the future kind of thing. It wasn't as a, as a multiplier, as a downtown multiplier. You know, like I said, having lunch or, you know, stopping at, you know, gift shop or whatever. That, that would be, I wouldn't want to rule it out, but I'm not like wild about it either. So if it looks like when we have a public hearing, people don't want it, then we just pull it. We just eliminate it. Because I don't think any one of us are like crazy about this. But there is some potential. I mean, you want to do some potential if, if it's going to be positive. So I don't know. Like I said, I'm not, I'm only on the fence as you want to provide, you want to provide as much diversity and need and meet needs so that people will come downtown. So if you have a variety of things and people can do errands downtown in South Deerfield... in South Deerfield Village, they're not, they're going to spend more money at other establishments if they have to make a trip there. You, you try to solve all your issues. So if you're hungry and you had to pick up your prescription, then you would go and have lunch or something, you know.
Also, we're, I'm sorry, this is Anne Mary Cludier. We're talking about a product that people don't consume. Like at a bar, you go and you have drinks at the bar. You don't go to the retail establishment and smoke up and then get in your car. So I, I do think that there is this, you know, aspect of what Carolyn's saying that is retail. You stop for this, you stop for that, you stop for that. You're not, no one's sitting around getting stoned driving around our streets as opposed to the bars where people are going and having drinks and driving around our streets.
Okay, this is Denise, okay, so if, if this wouldn't happen, I mean, is it an issue a few years from now to make an amendment to the bylaw to allow it?
No, you just have to go back. This is Carolyn, you just go back to town meeting and you just add it in.
Okay, so.
Yeah, just like we're doing now.
Can I please say something?
Who's, who wants to?
Can I please say something?
Oh, Casey.
So the process to go back and make a change to the bylaw may preclude actually getting somebody in. We've already been approached about this.
Okay.
Don't have the bylaw allowance for it. So it's kind of a forward thinking process is thinking about this element, yes. I can't say by whom or when because unfortunately, I wasn't able to assist them because we didn't have the allowance to do anything. But it does add a certain amount of commercial and retail access. Because as I was going to say earlier, I'm around that retail establishment on Five in Northampton because I do business around there a lot, get my oil changed and all that stuff. And you see people come in, they park, they get in line, they leave. They don't go downtown, they don't eat. And actually, if you talk to David Narcoitz, he realizes that. That was part of, you know, that's actually come up in conversations between my husband and David. So they get that that's not the best place if you want to attract people to the center of town.
Exactly.
Yeah, I can, and I can attest that, that's, this is Carolyn.
Yeah. And this is Denise, again, that's exactly why I was asking that question earlier. Is it, yeah, isn't it asset to have the ability to have retail downtown? Which apparently could be.
I think it's beneficial, this is Trevor, I think it's beneficial. And then, you know, they also would need a host agreement. So we would, community host agreement to do that. So we would be, you know, there's a lot of checks and balances that would come into play. But just to have that ability, we could always deny it, you know, based on, you know, not providing a host community agreement or not passing muster with a planning board for their permits. So I think there's checks and balances to it, but it would allow us that opportunity if, you know, if, if it makes sense. So do you want me to move forward with a couple of other things? Or do you still want to, do you want to leave that, that center in at the moment? And then see what comes out of the public hearing?
Yeah, this is Annalise, and I'm assuming that it meets all those other criteria with 500 feet from residences and schools.
It would have to.
Yep.
We checked those, we had maps drawn just to see.
Yeah, and it may, and some of that may preclude some of downtown. But, but just keeping the overlay district kind of matching the, the current zoning. But just based on those requirements, it may, some sections, parcels in town may not be allowed.
This is Denise, again, one more thing. Is there, is there, you know, if, if we all think that this is, you know, a reasonably good idea for it to happen, is there some kind of education that we can get out ahead of it so that, so that people are understanding what, what Anne Mary said, that they're not going to go in, you know, buy it and get stoned and drive around?
Sure, sure, yeah. We had done a lot of that kind of education. And we didn't, we didn't convince everybody and other people convinced other people one way or the other. But yeah, there's a lot, there'll be a lot of public discussion about it, especially at town meeting, for sure.
This is Carolyn, we have been adamant from right, right from the beginning that we wanted no social consumption establishments in town. You know, there was all kinds of, you know, you had to license so many as a percentage of your liquor license and all, all kinds of stuff so that you could be exempt from that social consumption establishment requirement. And, you know, we were clear, that's why we had our overlay district so early on. We didn't want to be forced to take, because we are right off 91 and 116. We, I just envisioned that being a horror show for us if we had those social consumption cafes that they have, you know, at some places. So anyway, that has been strongly part of our bylaws, no matter what we've had. But that was clear.
So could I, I just want to share one other, one other screen before we get into the text. So let me just share here and then I'm going to share. I want to share this screen. So just talking about our timeline right now, we're not quite sure if we can get all this done by town meeting. We may have to move to town meeting or there's discussion about that. So this is a little bit of, you know, the site plan review zoning amendment proposal. These are the dates kind of that we're working on. These are proposed timelines. So, you know, we have, we would, if we settled on everything tonight, we would post for a hearing like if we're, it's really plain work that we need to do all this. And we'll look with our help, obviously. But there would need to be a posting on Monday for a public hearing on the 20th or 19th or 20th. If we kind of settle on what we, what we wanted to kind of look like tonight. Then we would advertise on Monday, we would advertise on the 12th again. And then we have our, our public hearing on the 20th or so. And then set the town meeting on the 22nd. That's definitely a lot of time for revision. And so we're not quite sure if we'll make town meeting with this bylaw change. We may have to push town meeting off a bit. But just to kind of give you an idea of where we're at because of all the, you know, requirements for special town meeting, you know, special hearings and, you know, and special town meeting posting and, you know, post publishing of the warrants and all of that. It feels like we've been working on this a long time, but it still takes a long time to do all of this. So, you know, if we hold a public hearing on the 21st or the 20th, we need to draft warrant articles submitted to us on the 6th. We need to put it in the paper on the 6th. You know, the planning board would maybe review this amendment proposal and set a date on the 6th, I think you have a meeting on the 6th. You know, public hearing held and then, you know, on the 7th, we need to sign up, you know, do the final warrant and sign it. And then the planning board would submit the recommendations to town meeting on the 22nd, town meeting both. And then we would send it to be turned down. So there's a lot that kind of has to happen still. Very tight timeline, so we're not quite sure that'll all happen. But we just want to give you an idea of where we're at at the moment. Let me just stop that share and then share this. So this is the proposed text. And I, we could go through that and see, you know, if anyone has any questions. I'm just going to turn the lights on one second here. So, so really, we gave this to the town council and she kind of went through and redlined some stuff and then, you know, just made changes dramatically and then had some other questions and things. So, you know, if anyone has any questions on this, I can kind of roll through it a little bit and then just let me know if you want to stop, if you want to change anything or talk about anything. But I think it was just kind of cleaning up a bit of the language. And then, you know, doing the following definitions. Let's see.
This is Annalise, a question on 4661 section or just in general? I thought we were trying to remove the designation between medical and non-medical, and non-medical marijuana. That doesn't seem to be happening. Can you film?
I'm not sure where you're doing that.
Well, right at the end of section 4661, it talks about the last sentence there, retail sale of marijuana for non-medical marijuana adult use.
Right.
So.
She missed that, she missed that.
Do you think so?
No, I, I just thought that in these new bylaws, we were going to just have it be marijuana and not delineate the recreation.
I, I think, I think, I think she missed it, Trevor. It should just be marijuana.
Let's see.
That last sentence, that last sentence, I think she just missed it.
For non-medical adult marijuana use, and you're thinking it should be adult marijuana, okay.
There's another, yeah, I think there's another spot with that. I'll, oh, on, yeah, okay. I thought, I saw it again, I'll let you know if I see it.
Oh, perfect, Annalise.
I read it, I read it.
Really?
So I think it was.
Trevor, Chris Curtis, I'm not sure that Lisa had the most recent version of the bylaw that the planning board and I had been working on. There was a version that came out of the last planning board meeting that I had shared with everyone, but I'm not sure Lisa got it in time. So for example, in section 4660, there are some updates to the references to various state laws that are applicable. And that's not showing up in Lisa's version that you're looking at here. There may be a number of other things that she didn't get as well. So there, there needs to, I guess, be some blending of the planning board version and the select board version of, of the bylaw that has not yet happened.
All right, so you, I thought we were working on the most certain one, so okay. So do you, do you see anything in here that's missing from that that we could add in or no?
Yeah, if you, if you have the version that I sent out, all of the changes that the planning board had made or had discussed are shown in a, in a red font. And maybe rather than kind of going through all of that in, in detail, I'm not sure how best to do this. We, we could go through the planning board's version and just make sure that everybody's in agreement on that.
Oh, I just, this is the one that we had in front of the town council. So I'm trying to figure out, I'm a little confused at the moment.
I, this is John, I have them, I have them side by side. And there's not a lot of things, but there are some. I would even ask Chris if you had a few minutes to spend with Lisa or someone, just to make sure all the things we talked about are in there. That would be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, you know, you only 14 people to go over that, I don't think.
Yeah.
They're pretty modest, the differences.
Chris, do you think you, this is Carolyn, do you think you could just compare what we have here, what Lisa supposedly fixed and what you have? And, and just be able to give us a couple of highlights without? And then we could maybe have them ready for Monday? Because it doesn't make sense for us to, I mean, no, no one's being able to look at it.
No, I can't do that.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can do that. Again, as John said, the, the differences are not that substantial. So I think that's, I can add the planning board's changes into Lisa's version of the bylaw and give you a composite.
And just make sure all the, this is Carolyn again, just make sure all the non-medical adult marijuana is out. And it just says marijuana.
Casey would like to say something.
So actually, we had tentatively scheduled council for Monday so that if there were things you needed to ask her, you would have access to her. If Chris can either marry those things or send me his version, because I don't have it. Lisa is willing to work on this. Unfortunately, she can't come on Monday. Initially, we were going to have Lisa come, but her town meeting that she was at last night got continued to Monday. So Adam Koska is planning to join us. Chris, if it's easier for you to incorporate what you had for changes, that we can get that to Adam, but the sooner we get it to him, the better he'll understand what it is that you had changed for planning board?
Sure, I can, I can send you that all tonight.
And this is for, this is number 15, just for the, just for the fifth?
Yes, well, no, yes, this is for our meeting on the 5th.
Yeah, on the 5th, right.
We scheduled for the select board to come back and talk with you all, just in case.
Yep. And you're going to email them out to us, the, the listing?
The what?
The listing of that, of this here, when you get it, when you get it upgraded.
Oh, the, the updates, Chris? Is that what you mean, Paul?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can't, I can't, I can't make it out. I've got a small little computer here and you're trying to read this here. If we have the originals, then we could look at them and have them for, for Wednesday, for Monday, I mean.
We can print them in the foyer for you if you want, if you would like.
Go up to the office and get it, you mean?
Yeah, we can print whatever you need and then you can pick up a paper copy in the foyer.
Okay, sounds good to me.
So when we, when we get down to page four, when it talks about the three marijuana overlay districts, you know, that, that may change based on the discussion with Lisa on, you know, whether we need, I think we still need the three and then we just may decide that that central one disappears and we keep the MO3 up at that top northern section.
So, this is Chris again. On the, on the page that you're on right now, 4665, uses permitted and regulations, or and regulated, I guess it says. That is where there's, it appears to me, very substantive change being made by town council, where there's a lot of deletions, you can see. What it appears to me is that she is taking away the special permitting process and replacing it with a, with marijuana uses being allowed as of right.
Yeah, that's, that's not, we don't, that should not be in there at all. I saw that.
So is this, that was a question I think we got, we had when we got back to the, to this table. And then, because she had a lot of, I think, site plan reviews versus special permit. And I was unsure, really, for me, I'm not really sure that much what the difference is. Is there anywhere that you felt like we needed a special permit versus the site plan review?
Yes, this is John, we want the special permit. Site plan review, as we've all learned, does not help us prevent something coming into town that we don't really want. Site plan is much more, it gives us more flexibility and I think for marijuana, we need it. Does the planning board agree with that?
So, so this is Carolyn, I just want to clarify. So John, you feel like you want the special permit for all marijuana, not just site plan review?
All marijuana, that's the way it was, that we never, we never questioned that at all.
All right, that's fine, no, that's fine, that's fine. Then we just, we weren't sure what you wanted to do. I wanted to make sure we had retained. I wanted to make sure we had retained, I wanted to make sure we retained special permit for the downtown area for sure, because that was, um, you know, it was going to be much more, uh, concerning if we got something that was less desirable. So, and, and the other was just in the existing areas, more or less. So I wasn't so concerned, but I have no problem if you want to move back special permit.
Yeah, it's still a new enough, it's still a new enough industry, again, John, that we want to keep special permit already.
This, this is Denise. I think we changed the marijuana retailer to having a special permit in MO two to include that. Yeah, okay.
The, the planning board's version of the bylaw requires a special permit for all marijuana uses, as, as John indicated. The town council's version allows them all as of right with, with site plan approval.
Yeah.
Site plan review. There, there is a big difference between special permit and site plan review. With special permit, you have the ability to say yes or no, or yes with conditions. With site plan review, you, you do not have the ability to say yes or no. You, you can simply put conditions.
Yeah.
I'm fine, I'm fine doing special permit.
That's fine. There's no areas where you feel like you want less yes or no. You want yes or no everywhere. It makes sense to you to have that.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So will we?
So that will change, that will change about ninety percent of what the town council put into the bylaw, um, because most of her deletions have to do with that issue.
Okay. Yep, that's fine.
Okay.
So, um, so that was page four. Um. So then, uh, is this also, this is, I guess, on page five, is this also a continuation of that same kind of discussion? Um, I'm going to take a look at her notes where special permits, see those factors. Oh, she was thinking the, um. I think she was, she was, she was, uh, thinking of this pro, uh, project in design test pack because it was duplicative. She was already in the special permit already. I think that was the only reason she was propping that up. Um, and then, um, so here's where we had talked about, in section three, we had talked about maybe going instead of two thousand feet to three hundred feet and going from building to building instead of property line to property line. Is that still acceptable with the planning board?
Uh, did we make those, I think they were changes?
We, we did make those same types of changes in the planning board's version as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then. So we were with five hundred feet, which we, yeah, that stage is staying, right? The schools and, so, you know, we took it and moved out and all that. So that was all the same. Um, we sabotaged stuff there. Um, hours of operations. So marijuana establishment, fine. Um. I think that was also a few of the things, right? Yeah. I think this section here, section eight, she said it was repetitive with a B.
Yes.
Okay.
There were several sections that she made some changes that were repetitive.
Chris, can you just double check? This is John. Chris, just double check. We didn't take it out. I don't know.
We did.
Which one?
Section eight on, um. D eight, I think it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Under, um.
Eight.
Yeah.
She said that it was, um, deleted, it was repetitive with a B after where about, whether it was in the special permit part or?
Well, I guess it does, that stuff does kind of fall into special permit, so maybe it doesn't need to be there.
I think that's why she had to set out.
Yeah.
And then, um, I think we were changing it to factor the commissioner here for building. It's about a building that was pretty minor, but just changing that to commissioner.
Yeah.
Where it had, after, um, an existing town, it's a change there. Um, so she's.
Trevor.
Yeah. Casey?
Yeah, that was the section that you're pointing to now that you're showing them is the section that, um, you specifically wanted to draw people's attention to the fact that it was going to be, um, cer, issued in certain ways. She's outlined it here.
Oh.
Non-transferable, limited term expiry.
Yeah.
And I, I like, this is John. I like being specific about if there's a change of ownership, uh, it comes back to site plan approval.
That was one of Lisa's comments as well.
Yeah, that's good.
For, yeah, I didn't change, yep. Okay, good. And below, uh.
So this is Chris. Um, what you're showing now, um, is the section where she has, um, removed the requirement for bonding.
Yeah.
I wondered what the requirement was there.
We talked about this last night, um, and, you know, and I thought, oh, we do this for, you know, for, for, for zone, you have for solar, you know, we get this on, on one of the solar plants. And she said, you really can't, you know, you're not doing this for any other, so ABC, you know, tomato plant company, you're not requiring them a bond to clean up their stuff. Uh, she said, you would do this if it was on public property, but for private property, just, she didn't think it would hold up. Um, I said, well, with solar, you know, if we're asking them to clean up, you know, the solar panels and stuff. And she said, well, with the, with the marijuana facility, what are you asking them to do? Is that going to be a building left? You don't ask any other building to do that, so.
You don't ask any other retailer commercial to do that same thing. So her caution was if you ask, if you ask that, it could create a situation.
And we weren't sure. She was looking for your intent, I guess, was maybe that was too curious what your intent was there.
Yeah.
It may not be enforceable as well.
I was just going to say, she recommended it. It probably would not be enforceable in court.
I'm okay with it. I agree. I, I think at one, this is John. I think at one point, we thought people would set up big greenhouses out in the middle of a field or something and they might look ugly if they just abandoned them. But now we're talking about, this is all done in warehouses, so.
Yeah, that makes sense. That's what we were thinking too. Um, the last part was, uh. Oh, so this was, um, thinking that they, they should be, you know, um, processed in the order that they come into town, um, versus deciding. I, I, so I'm not really sure what, what this was about, but she was thinking that.
So what she's talking about is, um, they're processed in the order that the applicant files.
Yeah, this is not necessary to include this language as inherent in the special permit that the permit is discretionary.
Yeah, that seems fine.
Okay, um.
I think the comment, John, is we don't do that for other permits.
Yeah, I don't know why we put that in there.
Um, let's see. And then, find aids.
Yeah. All right.
So. I didn't think there's such a permit. I'm not sure why that site plan was taking out. I don't know if it was allowed or something. All the findings look good, I think. And then.
Oh, our use table is getting wider.
Yeah. We're going to call. So I, and I think a lot of this will change now that we're just going back to special permit for, for items.
Yes.
So that, that's fine. We can do that. Um. So I guess, um, so really just getting back to that initial map discussion we had before, that we would have it in MO three, we would just have cultivation manufacturing and the associated, you know, things like transportation and, you know, testing facility, that kind of thing. Um, MO two would be kind of everything allowed by a special permit, except for social consumption. And then MO, MO one would be strictly, um, marijuana retailer. And then, um. Not sure why marijuana, independent testing laboratory, is somebody waiting on that? I'm not sure why that one is. Do you have that with a retailer in the state building?
What she said before, um, in the la, the last time we talked, where if you recall, Trevor, she said that a lot of these things are, can be coexisting. So why would you eliminate the ability for the operation, if it does have a coexisting use, to not be able to do it?
Okay.
I think that's what she said.
Yeah.
Well, they said Sean or you?
Yeah, I'm not sure. Like, the testing lab, I think, is either, should be the same as product manufacturer or, or retailer. I, I guess it could go with either of them, so.
Testing lab could go with research facility.
Yeah.
Right. But do we want to let that in MO one, I guess, is the question.
I didn't think so.
We could do a special permit for that.
Yeah.
They're, they're pretty small operations, so.
Right, right. So maybe that makes sense.
Yeah.
For a special permit. Okay. So, um, let's see. I guess that's just kind of the wording, I think, on the end. Um. So, so Casey, do you think you have what you need to kind of go back to Lisa and talk about the special permit in all these areas? And, and then I guess Chris Curtis would, would kind of melt, I, I guess. I'm, I'm sorry about that. I thought I had the most current planning board, but that I kept on to everybody. But, um, but anything that you changed and put together, um, if you see any differences here that need to be added for her review too?
What I would suggest, Trevor, at this point, is to have Chris send that to me and schedule a meeting with me and Lisa and Chris. It makes more sense. It'll go faster.
That'd be great.
Yeah. Yeah, because what we want is Chris to put in his amendment somewhere that makes sense.
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm, I'm wondering if the planning board, maybe we even kind of vote on that to give, uh, let Chris represent us in making these changes? Is that?
Yeah.
You guys feel good about that?
Yeah. Hey, this is Denise. I, I just wanted to go back to the independent testing laboratory. Isn't, isn't that a precursor to, um, to manufacturing? Or are they two separate things? I mean, wouldn't you be testing before you manufacture or not?
They are two different things. Oh, go ahead, John. You probably don't want to do about this.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't know.
I, I think it has to be an independent, um, so it's not just testing stuff, but it's an independent lab that has to test it, I think.
Yeah. Any retailer would have to send itself to an independent company.
So it's a separate, yeah.
Okay, got it.
Got so much PhD, there's so much of this in it and, you know, so you have a completely separate business.
Okay.
Usually a small facility, you know, just a little testing lab somewhere.
Okay, so what you're saying is, is a co, a testing laboratory wouldn't reside with a manufacturing facility?
Probably not.
Thank you.
I mean, they may have their own little kind of testing in-house kind of thing, but it wouldn't be for, uh, you know, for any of their, you know, licenses or anything like that.
Thank you.
So, so I guess, um, I think that the select board has done it. At this point, is there any other questions or any other comments to the select board?
Uh, Chris Curtis, um, I noticed that, um, Lisa wanted to prohibit marijuana social consumption operations, uh, everywhere in town. The one comment I would have is that that term, um, should be defined in the definition section. And if she could put that on her list of things to do, that would be great.
Okay. So, and. Okay. Great.
Looking good.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. Um, I guess, I think the select board's done with our meeting. Anyone have any other questions or? I can't thank the planning board enough, um, for, for coming and sort of through this here. We're hoping we can get this all together and, and, and on town meeting, but, you know, it would rely on the planning board to set a, you know, set a date. Um, if Monday we could get all this stuff together, tomorrow we could get it all together and, and get it out to the papers to advertise for, for a hearing, that would be wonderful. But, you know, I think that's the planning board's chance, so. Great.
Good.
So I think a motion to adjourn the select board meeting? Last second?
I am muted finally. I have seconded.
All of them major?
Aye, Carolyn.
Yeah, yeah. And did David come on?
Are you, are you finished?
Yes.
Yes.
Planning board, do we, planning board, do we have any other, uh, matters to take up?
No.
Motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I second.
Denise moved and, and Mary seconded.
Thank you.
All those in favor, let's do a roll call. Um, Denise?
Yes.
Uh, Paul?
Yes.
Annalee?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
John, wait, yes. So we are adjourned until, uh, October fifth at seven PM. We'll come back to this. Thanks very much, Chris, and Jennifer and Casey and everybody else. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Isn't it six o'clock or is it seven o'clock?
It was supposed to be six originally.
Hold on, let me look.
I'm sorry, yep. Sorry.
Yeah.
Trevor, thank you for doing this. You did a great.
Six o'clock on the fifth. Okay, six o'clock on the fifth.
It's six o'clock? It's six o'clock, not seven? Okay.